I order the regular meeting of the Norco City Council and the City Financing Authority for Wednesday, September 18th at 6:15 PM. The clerk will call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers Bash, Hodgman, Newton, Mayor Brotenhanna, Mayor Grunmeyer.
Yes. The City Council will recess to close session to consider the following two items on the agenda.
I'm going to reconvene the public session of the Norco City Council and the Financing Authority for Wednesday, September 18th. We will have a report of actions taken in closed session.
Thank you. The City Council considered the matters listed on the agenda, and there are no reportable actions.
All right. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, if you'll please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance with Councilmember Greg Newton, and please remain standing for the invocation.
Thank you. Ready? Begin.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. It's my pleasure to introduce Pastor Phil from Grace Fellowship for our invocation today.
Good evening. Honored to be with all of you. I'm going to begin, before I pray, with a short reading of Scripture, and then I'd like to dedicate the prayer specifically for Kathy Azavito tonight. Psalm 16, "Preserve me, O God, for in you I take refuge. I say to the Lord, 'You are my Lord; I have no good apart from you.' I bless the Lord, who gives me counsel in the night, also my heart instructs me. I have set the Lord always before me, because he is at my right hand; I shall not be shaken." Heavenly Father, we come before you, Lord, as a city. We thank you, Lord, for all of our citizens, for our elected representatives, for all our first responders, and all those who are here tonight. And Father, we want to ask for your grace to be poured out on Kathy Azavito and her husband Danny, as they have been near and dear to this community, Lord, to this council chamber, to the governance of this city, and also to our own church. We pray, Lord, that your grace would be with her as she continues to fight for her family, as they continue, Lord, to take care of her and be with her. And so, Lord, we pray that you would be with all our people. I pray that you would give great wisdom, Lord, to our representatives tonight. May our city be pleasing to you in all ways, and may it be a place of refuge and safety for everyone here. We ask all this in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you.
So at this time, we are going to have an introduction by our lieutenant. So Pastor Phil gets to come right back up.
So I met Phil earlier this year at one of our events at the Veterans Memorial. As you all know, one of my commitments when I first started was to increase our volunteer program and find a chaplain. It was important that we had a chaplain. The valuable resource that they provide is tremendous, not only to the department but to the city and the residents it serves. So after meeting Phil, we hit it off right away. I felt he was the perfect fit for our chaplain here in Norco. So I got Phil in touch with our department. He went through our background processes, currently in our Chaplains Academy, and is set to graduate on October 7th. With that, as he graduates on October 7th, he will be assigned as your Norco Sheriff's Station Chaplain. I think that will be our...
Thank you.
Like I said, we're extremely excited to have Phil on board. I think he will provide a valuable resource to us and be a resource not only to the city but to the community as well. So, welcome, Phil. I know you've got to take off, but thank you for your stick around.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Honored to serve.
Thank you. At this time, we have more introductions, and I'm going to call Gary Lewis to the podium to do the introductions.
Well, I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce our ladies from the American Empire pageant, formerly City of Norco, Ms. Norco, et cetera, but honorable mayor, city council supervisors, representatives, and important staff members. Thank you for inviting us. Basically, I'll try to keep it to one or two sentences and bring the girls up. What we try to do is have the girls grow in certain skill sets, personal skill sets, and community skill sets. We work on them developing pride and communication and leadership, future leadership skills. And I think one of the most important is that of servanthood. And I think altruism from serving others specifically for their benefit rather than their own is something to be cherished. So at this time, I'd like to bring the girls up to introduce themselves. Come on, ladies. I'll have a wine up right here.
Yes.
Okay, let's go ahead and try to get this started, and we'll start with...
Hi, my name is... I'm in the middle of how would I...
Say thank you.
Thank you.
Say thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. My name is Rose Bach. I'm Ms. Eastville. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Peyton Walsh, and I am junior pre-teen Ms. Norco.
Hi, I'm Leah Jarrell. I am Ms... pre-teen Ms. Norco. Thank you.
Hi, I am Sadie Jackson, and I am pre-teen Ms. Eastville. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kieran Shaw, and I'm Deputy Ambassador.
My name is Naveya Gomboa, and I'm seven years old, and I'm Ms. Norco. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Grace Ruffiel Perez, and I'm Ms. Norco.
My name is Kendra Hernandez. I am 13 years old, and I'm your senior Ms. Ambassador.
And for those who haven't figured it out, Naveya's name spelled backwards is Heaven. So that's pretty awesome. And Kendra Hernandez, newly crowned as our Senior Norco Ambassador. And I think with her, that brings us to the 21 ladies who are serving the three communities. And just to let you know, this is since the event on the 25th, this is our 11th event already. So we plan on getting around a lot more, and I think that's about it. Well, don't leave yet, because we want to take a couple of quick pictures.
Yeah, so if council can come in and maybe stand behind our guests here, and we'll get a picture for you guys.
How's it going, guys? I just wanted to make one final comment, and I just truly want to thank Kevin and everyone else on the council, and our city manager, Andy, and assistant city manager for supporting us. It's been five years. And Kieran Shaw, which I forgot to mention, Kieran, she's up front. Can you stand up, please? She has been with us all five years from the very beginning. Thank you very much.
Well, ladies and little gentlemen over there, I would like to thank you for all the work that you do in the community. Everything we go to, we see you guys there helping out and representing the city very well. So thank you very much for all the time and effort that you guys put in as well. It's greatly appreciated. Okay, so at this time, Mr. DeRosa is going to meet me at the podium for our Business Appreciation Honorary.
Thank you, Mayor Grunmeyer, and hello, everybody. I'd like to invite Anthony Armandi to the podium, and anybody that you have with you. Come right up, stand right here with him. Steve? How's it going, gentlemen? All righty.
Stephen, you're all cleaned up. I'm trying. You know it.
So, good evening, everybody. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Scott DeRosa, and I'm a member of the Norco Economic Development Advisory Council, known as EDAC. On behalf of our City Council and EDAC, I am pleased to assist Mayor Grunmeyer with presenting this month's Business Appreciation Award to Norco Auto Tech. Norco Auto Tech has been proudly serving Norco residents for over 30 years, but in 2009, the American dream occurred. Anthony Armandi, and I'm sorry if I keep brutalizing your name. Anthony was a mechanic who grew up in Norco and worked at Norco Auto Tech, and was given the opportunity to buy the business from the Beretta family. Considering that the Great Depression was into its second year at that time, that was a very brave undertaking. But obviously, through hard work, business ethics, great customer service, and quality of workmanship, they weathered the storm of the Great Recession and sit proudly on one of Norco's busiest roads, Hamner Avenue. And I can also say from firsthand experience that they do indeed have great customer service and do quality work. As I mentioned earlier, Anthony grew up in Norco, and he still resides in Norco with his family. He is proud that his company, Norco Auto Tech, is a supporter of Horse Week, the rodeos, and many youth sports in town. So congratulations to Norco Auto Tech for being the recipient of Norco's September 2019 Business Appreciation Award. And now I'll turn the mic over to Mayor Grunmeyer to present the award.
I'd also like to say it makes me quite happy to see former Norco High School graduates doing well and giving back to the community, and then you also are a huge supporter of the livestock auction, which is so greatly appreciated. So it is indeed my honor to give you this plaque that reads, "The City of Norco hereby honors Norco Auto Tech for growing and prospering in horsetown USA for over 30 years, transforming customers into friends, and embracing the spirit of the community."
Thank you. I just want to say thank you, obviously, for this award. This is pretty nice to get. I'm honored to get it. And thank you to all my loyal customers, and we strive hard to keep everybody happy and do a good job, and just thank you. Thank you for everything.
So we have a quick change to the agenda. We're going to have a report from Senator Roth's office this evening. So we're going to put that in before we do our proclamations and our presentations.
If the council doesn't mind, I'm going to face the audience. So it's my honor to be here today with you guys here in Norco. My name is Michaela. I represent Senator Roth's office. As many of you know him, he does work up in Sacramento, and they just finished up their legislative session last week. So he spent many countless hours with his colleagues hoping to pass, you know, smart legislation up there in Sacramento and hopefully represent all of your interests here today. So I just want to cover a couple of his bills and just kind of broadly talk about some of the changes that have happened this past year. Hopefully, it won't take too much time. So the first one I do want to talk about is SB 16. That's the judgeships. Many of you may have known about this bill. Senator Roth was able to acquire $30.5 million to go to 25 new judgeships that will be spread out across the state. Many of those will be brought to Riverside County, since Riverside County is underserved in that area. So what this means for you, this means less wait time. This means less wait time for justice, and obviously, that is better outcomes for our community. The next one that probably affects a lot of, you know, people here in the community is SB 242, which is land use military notifications. Really, that's, it's just a fancy bill that basically cuts a lot of the nonsense out and streamlines the ability of local governments to be able to initiate plans that are around military installations and get those approved. Another, a couple other bills that the senator has passed without me going into too much is he's really focused on college accessibility, dual enrollment, and CTE, which with Norco College down the street is really huge here. So he was able to expand dual enrollment to also students that are in high school equivalency programs. So that's expanding to, you know, another, you know, 100,000 students across the state. So we're pretty proud of that one, as well as expanding Cal Grants opportunities for those students that are taking summer classes. So previously, you wouldn't be able to get Cal Grant funding if you wanted to take summer school in college. Now with this bill, you will be able to. So those are a couple of his highlights. More broadly, though, for the state, we are all aware, we see it every day, the, you know, housing and homeless crisis in our state. And we saw a lot of proposals this year, you know, some that were a threat to local control, you know, some that were, you know, trying to attack the issue at all sides, whether it be, you know, changing zoning, encouraging more housing developments, rent caps, and that sort of thing. And so I just want to, you know, reiterate where the senator stands on this, and the way he sees it is we need to find a balance, a balance between bold ideas with addressing this problem, but also still maintaining local control and making sure that our local governments are still maintaining the power to make the decisions that are best for their communities. You know, we're not, you know, the issues we have here are very different than Los Angeles, very different than San Francisco, very different than Sacramento. And so we need to make sure that we're not taking the tools away from our local communities to address the unique situations here. So with that, a couple more things. While we're on housing and homelessness, a record $2.4 billion from the state is going into homeless services across the state, and they've expanded the earned income tax credit. So if those of you that are, you know, low income and qualified for that tax credit, they have expanded it upwards of $60 million, so more families are able to get more money back in their pockets, more money that they have at home to spend on the things they need. Another big one is the legislature has placed a $15 billion bond on the ballot for our schools and universities, primarily for funding for facilities, so updated libraries and facilities and things like that. So next year, November 2020, be lookout, on the lookout for that bond. You guys will all have the opportunity to vote on that. Last one, or two more things. One that I just thought was a fun one for you college sports fans out there, you know, California is leading the way on this, which is they passed the Fair Pay to Play Act. And what that means is that college athletes will be able to now profit off the use of their image, their likeness, which, as many of you probably know, was previously against NCAA rules. So under California law now, they will be able to profit that. And so what that means is a lot of these students that are athletes oftentimes had trouble paying for books or buying meals or, you know, helping out at home because they weren't able to profit off their skills and their talent. And now they should be able to do this. Okay? Last one is, you know, despite, you know, highest levels of spending on education, funding going to homelessness, investment in all of these programs, the state is still able to invest $19.2 billion and have that in reserves. So it's looking good right now, and I just want to thank you all for being here and listening to me for a while. I will be here after the council meeting, so if you have any questions for me, you know, stuff that, more specific or concerns that you have, stuff that you want me to bring back to the senator that you're concerned about, please catch me after the meeting. I'd be happy to talk to you. Thank you.
Michaela, I'd also like to thank you for being here and sharing those reports so that our residents and the council can be informed on what's going on in Sacramento. So thank you very much for taking the time to be here. At this time, we are going to do proclamation for National POW MIA Recognition Day.
Just so you know, I'm the chairman of the Veterans Committee, but I also need to bring up my Rotary. If you've been up to the memorial, it was the Rotary Club of Eastville Norco that helped fund it. So come on back here, Scott, Jane, and...
All right. So our proclamation, "Whereas, since the founding of our nation, millions of courageous men and women have answered the call to defend democracy both at home and abroad, and many have made the ultimate sacrifice in the fight for freedom, liberty, and peace. And whereas, throughout American history, members of America's armed forces have made unusual sacrifices as prisoners of war, serving our country under conditions of extreme hardship while remaining steadfast even in their treatment violated fundamental standards of morality and internal codes of conduct. And whereas, over 82,500 American soldiers and military personnel are still missing and/or unaccounted for from World War II, the Korean War, the Vietnam War, and the Cold War. And whereas, family and friends of soldiers and civilians listed as POW MIA remain hopeful that they will one day be reunited with their loved ones. And whereas, on POW MIA Recognition Day, we pause to acknowledge and honor prisoners of war and those missing in action for their heroic service to our nation, and we owe them and their families a debt of gratitude which can never be fully repaid. Now, therefore, I, Robin Grunmeyer, Mayor of Norco, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim September 20th, 2019, as POW MIA Recognition Day in the City of Norco, and ask residents to observe this day with respect and honor as they commemorate all those who remain missing and unaccounted for from World War II, the Korean War, the Vietnam War, and the Cold War."
Thank you, Mayor Grunmeyer. For those of you, and I'm glad we have so many young people here, there are some very harsh realities in life when we send our people out to war. And this is from the Department of POW MIA Accounting Agency. World War II, 72,661 missing in action, bodies unaccounted for. Korea, 7,616 still unaccounted for. Vietnam, 1,586 still unaccounted for. Cold War, that's that period of time in our lives, most of us were growing up, 148 still unaccounted for. Even the Middle East, there's six unaccounted for. That accounts for not only military personnel, Department of Defense personnel. Good thing is, in 2018, the Department of POW MIA Agency were able to identify 203 missing persons. Last year, as of last week, 193 for this year. It's a slow process. They're still identifying bodies. The reason we proclaim this, this is a national day. It was set up several years ago by the POW MIA group back in Washington, DC. And for those of you who were there when we dedicated, we had the gentleman come out from Utah, who was, his father was a POW. This is very near and dear to us, especially us veterans. We have to remember, and as we grow up, we don't forget. We do not forget. And with that, I think we can go right into the Rotary Club, the Norco Eastville Rotary Club, of which I'm a member. Scott?
Thank you, and it's good to be here. Mayor Grunmeyer and honorable council members, my name is Scott Zagel. Today, I'm representing the, I want to say, the best service club in the Norco Eastville area. That's the Rotary Club. Isn't that right, Karen? There we go. All right. So we know that. But I stand here with some of the, I believe, the finest men and women in our, in our community. And first, but before I begin, at first, I just want to ask, are there any men or women in the audience that have given service to our country? Would you just stand if you're here? Thank you. I know behind me, there are some too as well. But it is written that the greatest love a man can give is to lay down their life for another. What you have done for us in the community is commendable, and you have provided us a place to, you as a city council, a mayor, have provided us a place in the community is commendable. You provide us a place to recognize, remember those who have sacrificed their lives, and in many cases, have given their lives so we can experience the freedom we have today. Before I present this check to you, I'd like to invite any of you guys Thursday morning, that's tomorrow, 7:15, to the Cowgirl Cafe for a free breakfast. That's right, free. You just have to come to our meeting. It's at 7:15, and will be done by 8:30. I promise you a great meal and a great time. And also, one of the things that we do, and it's a check that I want to present to you, mayor and council, for $1,000, and this is, this is to help with the Veterans Plaza. And we, as a Rotary Club, are committed to ongoing to do that each and every year. So memorial date, mark it, that's when we have our pitchfork steak fondue. We take steak, and we put it on pitchforks, and we deep fry it. That's right, deep fried, and it's good. And I'd love to invite you guys all to come out there. Get your tickets early, because we usually sell out, and I just want to be able to say that. So anyway, that's it. Thank you, and God bless you.
I'd just like to add, I'm the Staff Leader, I was on to the Veterans Memorial Committee, and I'd like to thank the Rotary, because if you haven't been to the Veterans Memorial, please go and visit it and invite your friends and family. It's a real unique place. It's a place where I think you can remember, it has a certain feel for it for all of our veterans that go up there. One of the gifts that the Rotary gave us was an actual monument area that is dedicated to our MIA and POWs. And so this Friday, we'll be honoring POW MIA Day by having a ceremony there, so I invite everyone to be part of that. And Scott, and the members of the Rotary Club, thank you. We couldn't do it without you. So appreciate it.
I got someone, Marine trainer.
We get to keep this check. This is the phony check. Do I give you the real check?
And it probably right over to Brian. Thank you.
And that right over to Andy.
Thank you very much, you guys.
Madam Mayor, if I might, December 7th, I've said this before, we have Kelly McKee, our retired Major General, who will be our guest speaker. He is actually the Director of the MIA POW Recovery Unit. He will be our guest speaker. That's December 7th, 10 o'clock, Pearl Harbor Day. I think it's our 14th year. We're really lucky to get a member of the President's Cabinet to come and speak for us. Hope to see you all there. All the queens.
All right. So we are going to move into City Council business items, starting with number one, which is City Council Communications and Reports on Regional Boards. We'll start with Mayor Pro Tem Hannah.
First reports on RTA. They have a program every year during the summer months and during the Christmas holidays for the students, kindergarten through 12th grade. 25 cent bus fare, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, anywhere you want to go. And this year, this summer, there was a little over 187,000 students rode the buses. They either went to Disneyland, or the beach, or wherever they wanted to go. But that was up over, I believe, 12,000 from last year. And it'll be in play again over the holidays. RCTC, we still haven't got our video back on moving these beams, but soon we get it, we'll play it up here. But they continue to work on the 15 and the installation of the 177-foot beams, which is the longest ones ever made in California. They're still working on them. I think it was going to take them like 12 weekends to get them in there. And out of interest, the last board meeting, the Caltrans and a consultant had recommended that we do a study on turning the carpool lanes on the 60 freeway from the 15 to the 91, and from the, on the 91 from the 15 up to the 60. They wanted to turn those into toll lanes. And it was going to cost about $300,000 for the study. But we voted it down way over majority, like 25 to 8, or something like that, to table it forever because we don't think people want any more toll lanes in the area. And that's all we have to report tonight, Madam.
All right. Thank you very much. So we'll move on to Councilmember Hoffman.
September 11th was a busy day for me. We did it in the Patriot Day, and thank you very much, Chief and Lieutenant. Excellent job, by the way, along with Brian, with your staff. The Western Community Energy Meeting, the implementation of the program is, began. So start looking for that as it comes out the notices. Of course, along with Kevin, we attended the Navy Detachment Meeting at the Norco Quarterly Historic Property Stakeholders. Learned a lot about what they're trying to do over there. They're really working hard to preserve the integrity of the historic district, and for that, I applaud them. And I already told you about the, this coming Friday, please, if you get a chance, the Norco High School Junior ROTC will be there, and they're going to be doing the POW, or the POW MIA Table Ceremony. If you have not seen it, they're going to do the full ceremony, and these kids do an excellent job. Again, that's 8:30 Friday morning up at the memorial. Thank you.
All right. Now, Councilmember Bash.
I'm going to touch on just two things. One, you may have read in the newspaper that the Western Regional Riverside Conservation Authority had a visit over a couple of years, or a year rather, by the grand jury. We took great exception as a body, the RCA did, in response to the grand jury. That's the third one I've been involved with, and I'm sorry, but they really need to clean their act up. Most of what they said was inaccurate. There was a lot of discussion as to whether or not we should hammer them, or just try to give them the facts, and I think we voted to hammer them. The things they came up with were just ridiculous, and if you have questions, just, you know, send me an email or whatever. I'm actually the longest sitting member of that commission, and I took personal offense as they never called me, and they claimed that the commissioners actually didn't know anything about the plan. The reality is, we've saved hundreds of acres, thousands of acres, protected over 150 species. And what's really important is, through this plan, I can remember literally when a mouse stopped development between Norco and Corona with this habitat plan, we're able to keep momentum going with construction, and at the same time, create a corridor, a wildlife corridor, that literally is the envy of the entire United States. It is the best RCA, literally, in the United States. Secondly, I spoke for the Public Utilities Commission, and right before I walked up, they said, "By the way, we're lopping a minute off your talk." The good news is, is that as I left, and I wasn't real happy, but I did get to tell them that a good portion of Norco almost burnt down, that the SEQA document did not contain anything with regards to the fire danger presented by these. I also was able to get in to ask them for the CAL FIRE letter that was sent, which they have to ask for. I must have been irritated. I was trying to keep it down, I think I did. But anyway, I got chased out by, "We have an area rep." And so John has now been in communication with her, Andy's been in communication, and the area rep from the PUC is going to be coming out, and we will walk this lady through the danger that we're talking about. So I think that it turned out to be a very, very, very big positive. I'm not certain how the court case went. Some people say it went great, some people say it didn't, or rather, the hearing. But I think at least we're going to get, have our say, because as you know, we were blocked from the proceeding. So anyway, if John has something else to say, you can ask him too. But I think it was actually a very, very positive enro that we made. Thank you. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Newton.
I attended a meeting.
Let you guys know I'm not slacking.
Well, and then there's me, nothing to report at this time. So, moving on to City Council Consent Items, Agenda Item Number Two. All items listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and may be enacted by one motion. Prior to the motion to consider any action by the council, any public comments on any of the consent items will be heard. There will be no separate action unless members of the council or the audience request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar. Items removed from the consent calendar will be separately considered under item number three of the agenda. Does council have any items to pull? Do we have any cards? Yes. Is there, okay, so there's a motion and a second to approve all items on the consent calendar? All right. So we will go to item number four, Public Comments. This is a time when persons in the audience wishing to address the City Council regarding matters not on the agenda may speak. Please complete the speaker card in the back of the room and present it to our city clerk so that you may be recognized. The Ralph &amp; Brown Act limits the City Council's ability to respond to comments on non-agendized matters. At the time such comments are made, the City Council shall not discuss or take action relative to any general public comment. And just a friendly reminder, you have three minutes to make such comments. Do we have any cards?
I do have a few cards. The first one is Eileen Flores with SCE.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers and staff. I'm Eileen Flores with Southern California Edison. I'm the Government Relations Representative for the area. As you already know, wildfires have devastated our state, and 10 of California's 20 most destructive wildfires have occurred since 2015. At SCE, our top priority is ensuring the safety of our customers, communities, and employees, and we're working hard to reduce wildfire risk throughout our service territory. In February 2019, we filed our wildfire mitigation plan with the California Public Utilities Commission, and it has been approved by regulators. In short, this plan will further harden our infrastructure, bolster our situational awareness capabilities, enhance our operational practices, and harness the power of data and technology to help mitigate wildfire risk. We've already begun implementing components of our wildfire mitigation plan. To further harden our infrastructure, we've replaced more than 150 miles of covered, of power lines with covered conductors. These power lines are covered with insulated materials that mitigates the risk of wildfire. We're installing additional equipment such as fast-acting fuses, which help interrupt electric currents more quickly, and should significantly reduce the risk of ignitions where there is a short circuit on our distribution lines. We are also adding more remote-controlled automatic reclosers on circuits such as high-fire risk areas to prevent interrupted circuits from automatically re-energizing. We continue to inspect all of our overhead lines and equipment in high-fire risk areas to identify and remediate potential issues outside of standard inspection cycles. This may involve helicopters conducting aerial inspections. To bolster our situational awareness capabilities, we've been installing more weather stations, advanced weather modeling software and computer hardware, and high-definition cameras in high-fire risk areas. We're also doing a lot to enhance our operational practices, which includes the launch of an even more robust vegetation management program. And we've been enhancing our public safety power shut-off, also known as PSPS program, the practice of preemptively turning off power during high-fire risk conditions. For more information about these programs that I just mentioned, you can find them at sce.com/wildfire. And since September is Emergency Preparedness Month, we are encouraging all of our customers to please update their information with SCE, either through the website or through our customer service line at 800-655-4555, so that they can receive pertinent information about outages and PSPS. Thank you for this opportunity to provide an update. Sorry I sped through it, but I have, oh, good. I have two seconds left, so thank you.
Thank you, Eileen.
Robette Sterns.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers, and Mr. Harper. I'm here tonight again because of this wild vicious animal permit situation. Bottom line is, we applied for the permit, but the dog had a designation from LA County. That designation has been removed, therefore, the permit is, we don't need it. There's no basis for the permit anymore. The law states that, that's all there is, and I don't understand why we're even here. I'm getting to the point where I don't trust my city and the good laws of the government, and I don't know what they're going to do. And I worry about my dog. I'm not getting any sleep. Other issues are the, the letter of the email responding to the letter from my attorney. And there were some things in that letter that are false about me, and I don't appreciate that. And I came tonight to make sure you guys heard this, because I'm, I'd be kept from talking to council, and I thought that was a whole issue, that council was here for your citizens. I've been a resident for 16 years, never an issue, not one, not with animal control or the city, ever. This is a cattle dog that has proved himself beyond any other dog, and you all are aware of that. So I'm not even sure why we're here, but I'm getting tired of fighting this fight. And if we have to take legal action, we will take legal action because it's a principle of this now. There are laws for a reason. Everybody needs, if there were no laws, then anybody could do what they want. And the way I feel this has been handled is that people are making stuff up as they go. And it's just not, it's not fair. It's not right. And I'm a reasonable person, and I don't want to fight with you, but I want what's right. And I feel that I'm not getting what I should be getting. And if anybody can explain to me where I'm wrong, I'd be more than happy to listen. But it all needs to be resolved. That's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pete Delmatov.
Mayor, council folks, here we are again to talk about it. We want to be heard by everybody, and we want everybody to do the right thing. We don't want false things put in writing like they have been. It's not fair. We don't want to go to the next step. We want it resolved. We don't want to take valuable resources from us or the city. The cities prove, the animal control has proved there's nothing wrong with our dog. It's in their own permit that was granted, and at that point, that designation was removed. Everything was based on another county. That has been removed. We're being told we have to stick with it, redesignate with two steps higher of a designation? Show me. Show us where that is in the code. We can't pick and choose from all over the place, California, Norco, Norco doesn't reference California. It's not in the code. You know that, John. We want council to hear us. That was stopped. We had a tentative agenda for today that was put on hold. As far as I know, it was put on hold. That was a little bit of a surprise. Yeah, we got legal counsel to make sure that what we're doing is correct. We have other cities around us that fully recognize the removal of a designation. That was just potential. Norco doesn't even have a potential. You can't create a potential into a vicious or a wild animal. You can't do it. So again, we're here, we want to be heard. Robette's not getting any sleep. What do you think that does to me? I'm carrying that load too. She's getting sick because some people won't do the right thing. Brian, John, and the superintendent that's not here to defend himself. But I'm still going to say it because it's not right. We do things that are right, right from the start. We've acknowledged everything. We followed all the procedures. We were excited when we got that designation removed. That means the only people liable is us. It's on us if something were to happen. That's how it works. But to require us to redesignate a dog and get this astronomical insurance, it's not right. It's not right. Thank you very much for hearing us.
Thank you. No more cards? Okay. All right. So that's going to take us to item number five, which is a public hearing. Public hearings are going to go in this order. We'll have a staff report and presentation, and then council will have questions of staff. We'll have an open public hearing, so we'll have public speakers in favor, against, and neutral. We will close the public hearing, and it'll come back to council for discussion and action. So we have one item before us this evening, 5A, which is Zone Code Amendment 2019-01, a proposal to amend Chapter 18.68 of the Norco Municipal Code regarding accessory building use permits and to incorporate recommended change- use permits and to incorporate recommended changes from the city council update report on March 6, 2019. Mr. King, you're up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Of course. This is a, let me see. Sorry. Yes, the House. All right. I apologize. This is an item that's coming to you as a recommendation from the Planning Commission from an update meeting that was given to the city council regarding our current regulations for regulating accessory buildings. When the city council heard the update, they asked the Planning Commission to weigh in, and the Planning Commission did. And the main issue that was brought forward by staff was some requests that were made by citizens who wanted to build RV parking structures, but because of the limitation that was in the code, that it be the maximum height of 18 feet or the height of the primary dwelling, it limited people with a single-story structure to not be able to construct an RV parking garage. So the Planning Commission reviewed this, and they recommended that the height of an accessory building for parking an RV garage be 18 feet regardless of the primary structure. One of the other issues that the city council discussed was where and how to measure the height of an accessory building. The Planning Commission took this up for discussion as well and recommended that the height of the building be taken from the finished floor, measured from the front side of the building where the primary entrance is. That's what they did. So that's a recommendation of Planning Commission, and with that, I'll answer any questions.
Does council have any questions of staff? Kevin?
So what if the finished floor's been raised two or three feet?
Well, the Planning Commission did bring that up, and one of the, well, one of the issues that keeps coming up is it's very difficult in situations like this to come up with one rule that fits everybody equally. So rather than try to address that specific kind of situation with a rule that may or may not apply to everybody in the city equally, they determined that it was better to review them on a case-by-case basis, since they'll go to Planning Commission.
Because I know that when we met with one of the building inspectors, he actually did a whole lateral. I don't know if you were there or not, but they would actually try to figure out a way to make sure that the person didn't raise the floor.
And technically, that should not happen unless it's a drainage issue that needs to be addressed, but that's why the Planning Commission, realizing that every lot in Norco is different from every other lot, it would be impossible to come up with a rule that equally applied across the board.
Well, I can show you three buildings that are two to three feet higher than they're supposed to be.
Other questions or comments from council?
Just kind of make one comment. I understand the difficulty in that, you know, my experience will tell me you're going to measure it from finished floor for height, but in, kind of in Kevin's defense here, that it, when you look at different grades, and the example I was going to use, and I don't know if it's one of the three you're talking about, but the new leaps and bounds off of Valley View, that was like a two-story building, but because of the drainage and the way that had to be graded, it's like pushed up like four feet taller, and it's just to allow for the drainage. So the height skews in a way, and I think that's maybe part of the difficulty we have with planning and our approvals of these buildings, is that each one is different. But that's the one that always jumps out at me is the new leaps and bounds because it looks much taller than it actually is on that one side that faces the street. So I don't know if that helps you to understand it or not, but...
No, no, I get it, and I totally understand that. No, I wasn't referring to that one. It's when they bring a lot of dirt on, and literally you can see they're sitting now on a hill where there wasn't a hill before, and nobody enforced any drainage. I got three of them surrounding me. And so I know firsthand, and people are told this is going to happen, but you can see it, and all three of them, you can literally see them sitting on top of a hill. And so in that case, yes, it was a drainage issue, but all of that requirement just went away, and you know that. So I don't know what to do about it.
Any other questions of staff? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Are there any cards?
No cards.
I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to council. No, discussion, oh, Councilman Hoffman?
Just a short discussion on this. When Councilman Newton and I were on the accessory building committee on Planning Commission, we knew we'd have to tweak this as we went through. We knew that as planning came in and started looking and reviewing accessory buildings, and there'd be changes to be made. I think what we've done here is tried to simplify it a little bit to make it easier for not only the residents or the applicants to understand it, but for the counterstaff and to understand it. I think this is part of it. It's not, is it perfect? No, and nothing's going to be. Is it going to change? Yeah, it's going to change again, we're going to see things coming. But you will have to admit, this is, we don't sit there, this council is not sitting here and going through every two weeks with an appeal hearing because of an accessory building. So in a way, we kind of fixed some of the problem. That's all I got to say, thank you.
Any other discussion?
Question? Excuse me, Steve, I got your voice. So what's your answer to Kevin there on, like bringing in dirt, fill dirt? They build a deal, they could bring in, some places would require only one or two feet to fill to make it up, and others, can they bring in as much as four feet?
Well, like I said, it's going to be a determination of the Planning Commission because they're going to look at what's being proposed for the grading and then what building is being proposed. And in their discretion, they will determine if an excessive amount of soil is being proposed to be brought in, and then with that discretion, they can make changes or deny it.
Well, yeah, if they're going to have to bring in four, three or four feet of filter, it looked to me like they'd need to move it to another location.
Right.
Because they'd have too much area there to fill in and cover it, because if you brought in four feet and you've got an 18-foot point at your roof, you're 22 feet above the rest of your stuff over there.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Steve? We're still going to stay with this, I think it's like every six months, we'll still keep reviewing this ordinance? Isn't that kind of the time period we came up with?
It's every year.
Oh, it's just once a year now? Okay. Well, good. Tell the Planning Commission good job on this, that, like Ted said, it's eliminating a lot of the issues that we have, but I just want to make sure we keep reviewing it all the time.
Yep.
Thank you.
Is there a second? It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the Zone Code Amendment 2019.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Norco approving Zone Code Amendment 2019-01, amending Chapter 18.68 of Title 18, accessory building use permits with other amendments to cross-references in Title 18 as needed, Zone Code Amendment 2019-01.
All right, thank you. So we are going to move on to Agenda Item Number Six, which is City Council, City Manager, and Staff Communications. We will start with Andy. Okay, Ted?
Remember Friday, 8:30 at the Veterans Memorial, thank you.
Berwin?
Nothing.
Lieutenant?
Yeah, just a quick reminder, on Saturdays, our community event, the horseback trail ride with our tourist permit. We will be meeting at 8:30 off of Gate 5 and taking off on the trail ride about 9:00 AM, so it should be about an hour and a half ride, so. And last, I know there was some earlier discussion this year about our second sergeant's position, which will be filled at the end of this month.
Perfect. Chief?
Nothing to report.
Gina?
Did we miss Scott? No?
No, he's right there. He's been super quiet tonight, and he hasn't run out either, so it's been delightful. Brian? Steve? Chad?
Just wanted to report real quick, we finished primary construction work on the hammer widening projects, I think it turned out very well. We just have some minor parts of those items to finish up, but that project is, for the most part, done, so we'll come back probably in November with the notice of completion. But I think overall, we got some nice improvements out there. I wish I had more of the businesses participate, but we did what we could, and we can say we can move on, and those future improvements will be done by those businesses if they ever develop.
Perfect. Matt? Diane?
Yes, thank you for filling in this evening. You're welcome for a really short meeting, too. Yes, Councilman Newton?
I'd like to, a question for the lieutenant is, whose horse are you riding on Saturday? Because I made him an offer and he declined. I don't know why he didn't want to, you know, I asked him if he'd like to ride an Arabian off the racetrack, and he just...
It only goes left.
He's a smart man right there, he knows. I appreciate it, thank you.
Nothing else, Robin?
Okay, Kevin?
I am wondering if we can, I'd like to agendize in our next meeting a discussion about the Spirit of Norco Monument, about creating a group. I would like as quickly as possible, maybe to move forward on this. I think that I'd like to get it built, and then if possible, the sooner the better. And then the other thing I'm wondering, as you all know Taylor Dawkins, is she's basically fighting for her life, and I'm wondering, she'd be a great name on that, but anyway, I'm wondering if we as a council can send her a letter and wishing her well, and all of us sign it, something saying she's an inspiration and something like that, I think it would be kind of cool for her. As you know, she's still in the hospital, they weren't able to get the entire tumor, but that is an amazing kid. I've known her, well, you've probably known her even longer, but I used to watch her play, and she's just an inspiration, so if we could send her a letter, and if we could agendize the monument.
So you're making that a motion to...
Yeah, I'm making that a motion to...
If I can add to that?
Yeah.
The deadline for submitted items for the next city council meeting is actually tomorrow. Obviously, we can bring this back, but it wouldn't be at the next council meeting.
That would be the following council?
There's no way we can get around this, if the council's willing?
If I may, just so you know that we've shot topo for the area, and we're working on the construction drawings, and our Ingalls Park Development Committee, I'll be setting up a meeting to show them, because I've actually outlined the whole area in chalk, and so we're kind of laying it out.
Okay, so it's in progress.
We're moving in progress, but we'll come back to council with is an amendment to the budget once we've computed all the construction costs.
Yeah, I'm good with that. Yeah, I'm good with that. And then if we can, send a letter, I don't think I need a motion for that, do I?
I don't think so, and so if we can just have a card in the front, and everybody stop by and sign it?
Oh, that would be even better. That would be really great, have the whole staff, as many people as possible. Yeah, all right, great, thank you.
So who's going to get the card, though?
We have a few cards, like kind of big cards with horses on it.
That would be perfect.
Okay.
Cool, thank you, Diane. John? All right, ladies and gentlemen, I would like to adjourn this meeting at 8:04.